Greetings and welcome to our city council meeting. Is this on? Yeah, it's on. A regular scheduled meeting Tuesday, August 8, 2023 at 6 o'clock. We do have a quorum, so I will call us to order. Our invocation tonight is going to be given to Dr. David Erickson. He is the new president of Jacksonville College. So if you'll come, if you will stand, he'll give us the prayer and then we'll do our pledges. Dr. Erickson, thank you.
Dear wise and loving Father, let me say thank you today on behalf of all of those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for our life, for our health. Thank you for the callings you have placed on our lives and your sustaining power to live them out. Thank you for those that are being recognized tonight and for their faithfulness to live out those callings for many years. Lord, thank you for loving us with your boundless and gracious nature. Lord, I pray for those who are here today, for our mayor, for our manager, for our councilmen and others. Lord, I ask that you would grant them wisdom to govern us well, even when there are conflicting interests. Lord, I pray that you would give each one of them a sense of the welfare and the needs of our people. Lord, I pray that you would give them confidence in doing what is good and what is right. And Lord, I pray that you give them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is agreement. And Lord, I pray that you would give them peace, peace in their lives and joy in the tasks that you have set before them. Lord, I pray that all would go right and that we would work together for the benefit of our beloved city of Jacksonville. We pray this in your blessed name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Of the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. Tonight, we've got special presentations. We'll start with the business of the month presented by JIDCO President Shane Pace. There's Shane, so come forward.
All right, you guys can hear me okay. Thank you so much, council members. This evening, we are recognizing Madix. Madix is a local manufacturing company here in Jacksonville. They have a manufacturing facility in Carroll, Anheuser, formerly headquartered here in Jacksonville in December of 2021. And one of the things that I thought was most impressive when I read the news that they put out about it, the press release, was that they talked about the manufacturing facility and all the equipment that they acquired in that purchase. But most of the people in the neighborhood, the folks who were there, who have been doing a great job for so many years, who have skills in woodworking, and they are true assets to them, to this community. And so that's one of the things that I think is most important is that they came in, they embraced the folks who were here, they kind of helped in every way, and they continue to just be a great community partner. So we want to thank you guys so much for being here tonight.
Thank you all. Our next item is to recognize a friend of mine that's been a friend of mine for many, many years, Claude Armstrong. He worked with my dad back in the day when we first moved to Jacksonville. But Claude has served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for 46 years. Yeah, so there you go. Claude's a good man. He loves his city. Obviously, we can tell that by serving. We wanted to present to Claude Armstrong Chairman, and that's your plaque, Planning and Zoning Commission from November 1977, June of 2023. And he was the commission chair from 1996 to 2023. Your dedication to our city and to the citizens of Jacksonville is respected and appreciated. Appreciate your service. We really do. Our second one is to Hubert Robinson. If you'll come forward. We recognized him at our last meeting, but Senator Nichols had a Senate Resolution Number 617 that was not complete at the last meeting. So it's just, whereas the Senate of the state of Texas is pleased to recognize Hubert Robinson, who is retiring from Jacksonville City Council after 20 years of distinguished service. He represented District 1 on the city council from May 13 of 2003 to May 9, 2023. He served as acting mayor from September of 2014 to June of 2015 and served three times as mayor pro tem. Whereas an inspiration to all who knew him, Councilmember Robinson led the people of Jacksonville with dedication and integrity and sought to address the concerns of his constituents. He contributed his efforts to many municipal endeavors for the improvement of the city's infrastructure and worked to enhance the quality of life for the residents of Jacksonville. Throughout his career, Councilmember Robinson's diligence did benefit the city of Jacksonville. He was involved in many projects, including the construction of the new city hall, service complex, the installation of a citywide automated water system, meter system, and the expansion and upgrading of our parks. Whereas a man of deep faith, Mr. Robinson is a member of Sweet Union Baptist Church where he serves as a trustee. Devoted his spiritual family and to his constituent, Mr. Hubert's effective collaboration with colleagues and city officials has helped to make Jacksonville a safe and a rewarding place to live, work, and raise a family. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Senate of the state of Texas, 88th legislature, hereby commend Hubert Robinson on his years of civic leadership and on his service to the people of Jacksonville and extend to him sincere best wishes for the future and all of his endeavors. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be prepared for him as an expression from the Texas Senate. And it was signed by Dan Patrick, President of the Senate, and Robert Nichols, Member of the Texas Senate. So we wanted to present that. Sorry, it's a one meeting late, but we were worthy of an extra hug.
Thank you.
You gonna say anything?
No, just saying.
Our third presentation is, I still hadn't seen him. Chief Fort- oh, there he is. Chief Fortner, another great friend of mine. He wore a red for fire. I like it. Match your face? Yes. As you well know, Keith Fortner's retired from being our chief of police. So he wanted to present an appreciation of over 20 years of service, January 2002. Did I say police? I'm sorry. Fire department, sorry. That's terrible. 20 years of service, Chief Keith Fortner, Jacksonville Fire Department. It is with admiration and appreciation of your contributions as a firefighter, leader, and friend that we sincerely say thank you. So there you go, my man. She's requested if all the firemen will come for a picture. That'd be great.
Before we take any pictures, something that's been on my heart, and I just want to share it with you all.
Does that work?
Yeah. The department heads that work for the city, we're the fortunate ones that always receive the accolades for any great doings in the city. But the truth is, it comes on the efforts on the backs of all the members of the department. We just received the accolades and it's been an honor and a privilege to work alongside the members of this fire department. Some aren't here. We have a lot of new staff members and it's just been a great ride.
No, 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 you cover me up. Yeah, this is not my gig. You got something else, chief? Okay, cool.
What now?
I don't know.
I may not be the best person to do this because I'm a little emotional, especially when it comes to So I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. January of 2002, this skinny little redheaded kid.
I was skinny.
He was skinny. He was very quirky. He was kind of a little dorky. But he walks into our fire station with confidence, with dedication from day one, and just with a mission, with a mission to be a firefighter for the city of Jacksonville. Here he stands 21 years later, retiring as our leader. We have seen him, I personally, because I was there the day that he started, have gone from him being the rookie washing dishes, AKA his nickname is Dish, and a lot of us still call him that at times. But he has matured, grown up, career development, everything into this wonderful man that you see here in front of you. I, for one, would not be the woman that I am today if it was not for his friendship, his mentorship. Public service, we're a family. Police, fire, EMS, we're all a family. Keith and I and most of the men of the department, especially that have been there, we've been through hard calls, we've been through deaths, family deaths, departmental deaths. And all of us came together as a family, and that's what we are. We're a family. And Keith will forever be a family to us. So it's a tradition, it's a tradition for fire departments and JFD especially, that when a member retires, they receive a duty axe. Unfortunately, dishes didn't come in yet. So because we know him so well, he does not like pictures. There are very few pictures of him in his home. So we decided to get you and your wife a picture to hang next to your axe when we receive it. You cannot argue with Brandy. You cannot argue with me. This will be proudly displayed in his home. It will also be proudly displayed in the not-too-distant future at the public safety complex with all of the other men that served before him as chief for Jacksonville Fire Department. And it will be hung proudly, and just know that you're going to be missed and you are loved.
So Alicia stole my thunder. So we truly do work together as partners, servants. Police can't succeed without fire support and vice versa. And I've been doing this a long time, just as long as Keith has. I've never worked with another fire chief in my career that I was able to just sit down, talk to, work things out. We had some disagreements here and there, especially when we were building a building. His office, when I walked in, was 60 square feet bigger than mine. It's still, it's still a little bigger, but we got that worked out. But under his leadership, I can tell you that these, your fire department, your EMS people have saved a lot of lives in this town. I know for a fact. And I'm proud to have worked with him, to call you a friend. From the men and women of the police department. Partners in service, brother.
Appreciate you, Keith. Don't be a stranger, okay?
I also want to thank the city manager, assistant city manager, and the council members and the mayor and many that have come before them. I've worked nine years as the fire chief. And under that, there was never a time I didn't have their support as representative of the fire department. They always wanted what was best and continue to, and they show it. So I want to give them that thank you. The biggest thanks goes to my wife. When I come home today, I told her, I said, I just promoted to fire chief and we need to move to Jacksonville. It was not a question, an argument. It was, when do we pack? When do we go? When I came home and said, I think it's time for me to move on. It was never a question. She's always shown me support. And I wouldn't have done any of this without her. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Keith. Appreciate it. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some, whatever time we need to, to listen to citizens' responses, concerns. Do we have any that filled out a page? Okay. We don't have any citizen participation. Our next item, number seven, is consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda require little or no deliberation by the council. You see those. It's approved in the minutes, the appraisal district's budget. We're appointing two new members to the Jacksonville Housing Authority Board and a street closure for trunk or treat. I will entertain a motion for those.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galick.
My second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any questions, discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing that motion carried. We do not have any action out of executive session. So our quarterly financial report will be presented by Finance Director Roxanna Browley.
We're gonna let Chief Williams go first. I apologize.
Oh, okay. All right, pardon me. Calling an audible, Chief Williams.
Item 10.
Item 10, we're moving that one up, if that's okay. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, thank you for letting me address you tonight. On July 27, I was made aware of a YouTube video recently posted online that depicted an encounter with several Jacksonville police officers and a self-admitted First Amendment auditor. The encounter occurred on May 26 at about 7:45 PM at Cherokee County Sheriff's Department Operations Center, which is the old police station building located on Larissa Street. First Amendment auditors routinely travel throughout the nation and create scenarios so that an encounter with law enforcement is likely. These can include traffic stops, protests, public buildings, or other normal police activities. Their goal is to exercise their constitutional rights of free speech, freedom of assembly, or freedom of the press. Sometimes the auditor will provoke a police response to test the officer's ability to remain professional and not interfere with their rights. Auditors have been present in Jacksonville before. I recall seeing one video where an auditor approached an officer doing a traffic stop in a local gas station parking lot. The officer completed his business with the violator in a professional manner. It basically ignored the auditor videoing the stop. I remember seeing a big green checkmark come across the screen, and I assumed that that meant we passed that test. There have been several other auditor videos created in Jacksonville. So on May 26, our officers were dispatched after we received a call of a suspicious person at the sheriff's operations center. The caller provided a clothing description of the mail. The first officer was arriving on scene when he observed the mail begin running from the facility towards Rust Street. The officer still in his vehicle began to follow the mail now walking east on Rust. The mail made furtive movements with his hands and saw the police vehicle behind him. The mail then turned around and began walking the other direction. The officer turned around in his vehicle and was able to intercept the mail on the west side of the facility. The officer used verbal commands to have the mail stop, and he complied. The mail then told the officer, back off. The officer noticed the mail was holding a cellphone in his hand in such a manner that indicated he was videoing the encounter. The mail was dressed in a long sleeve, wooded sweatshirt, and shorts. The mail had some sort of device applied to his chest that some wondered if it was a body worn bomb. There were other bulges appearing under his sweatshirt. It became evident that the device on his chest was a body worn camera similar to the ones that we wear. The officer tried to engage the mail in dialogue, but he did not speak. Other officers arrived on scene and attempted to speak to the mail, but he did not respond. The mail was acting bizarre and making furtive movements with his hands. He appeared to be paranoid of the officer's presence. At one point, he approached an officer after being told to stop. The officer took a taser from their holster and held it in a ready position. They did not point the taser at the mail. At this point, the officers had articulable facts that led them to believe that the mail could be armed with a weapon. A Supreme Court case called Terry v. Brown allows law enforcement to pat the outer clothing of a person to determine if there are no weapons, only when they have facts and circumstances that lead them to believe that this may be armed. This court case allows a pat down to ensure officer safety and the protection of the public during an investigative stop. The officer performed a pat down of clothing to determine that the mail did not possess any weapons. During the pat down, the man began to yell that his rights were being violated, and they had no reason to be putting their hands on him. The mail demanded the officers identify themselves by name and badge number. The mail demanded the officers to disperse, and the mail made several comments meant to provoke officers into a verbal debate. The supervisor on scene contacted the sheriff's department and was then told to wait. There was no criminal trespass warning issued. There were no arrests and no citations. The officers ended the encounter clear of the scene. Upon seeing the video posted on YouTube, I was concerned about some comments made by our officers, mostly around what can be considered rude and unprofessional commentary. I was also concerned about their interpretation of public versus private property, which seemed to be the central core of the issue at that stop. I ordered an internal investigation into the incident. The investigation is still ongoing up, and it should be done within the next few days. The YouTube video is edited in such a manner as to lose some of the context of the stop. When viewing our body camera from one of the officers, you can clearly see his mannerisms and provoking demeanor. His actions were meant to elicit a response from the officers. We began receiving hundreds of phone calls, voicemails, emails, Facebook posts from all over the world. We pulled in extra people to handle the increased call volume. Recognized that it early occupied a lot of time that mitigate, which was quickly getting out of hand. I notified the city manager what was going on. Over days, I answered as many emails and voicemails as possible. I decided that all police employees would receive training in how to deal with these types of auditors. I looked at online videos that I had my employees watch. I contacted my peers for advice, and someone pointed me to TML, who had produced some training material regarding to encounters. I received the curriculum the same day and began setting training schedules for my employees. In my discussions with Mr. Hubbard, we decided that all city employees should sit through the training, and that training began immediately. Thus far, I've spoken to over 100 of our 130 employees. I will try to finalize that training this week. We continue to have ongoing discussions in my workplace regarding other types of encounters we may be exposed to. These conversations have been difficult, technical, and thought-provoking. The auditor returned to the PD last week. I met with him and provided an update on what we were doing. He asked for a complaint form with Jacob Biden. The entire meeting was livestreamed on his YouTube channel. The visit was non-confrontational, and the comments made on his YouTube channel were mostly positive. I recall going through the hiring process when I applied for this job, and I told the officers, the city council, and the public that we made mistakes. My promise is always when they occur, we'll admit them, fix the damage, and learn from them, and that's what we've done here. Every involved in this encounter has said to me that they acted in a manner that, in retrospect, they wished they hadn't. Nothing they did was egregious. Should we have chosen different words to use? Yes. Should we have better articulated public versus private property? Yes. Could we have kept our cool better? Absolutely. The fact is, we made some mistakes. It's thankful, though, that those officers didn't overreact to a bad situation and only make it worse. We have learned a great deal from this call. We are better, more educated, and still out providing quality services to our citizens. We will hold ourselves accountable. I'm proud of my team to endure the criticism that each and every one of them has, and we'll overcome this in short order. I appreciate everyone's patience as we've dealt with this. I appreciate the support of our city manager and our wonderful community. This was personal of all of us. We know we're better than that. We're better than what was depicted, and we're going to rise above it. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
I do have a couple of questions. Chief, thank you for that recap. I appreciate it. You mentioned that the video that was released on his YouTube channel is edited. Are there plans to release the unedited version that is on the body cameras of the police officers?
I don't have a plan to release it. Certainly can. There's nothing. I'd give it, Brad, I don't think there's anything on there to try to redact or for.
I mean, I only ask that because you mentioned context being lost in the edited version. And I know when I was watching it, that was one of the main questions I had, is this edited and to what extent is it edited? So if there is an unedited version of it, I think it would be helpful if it can be released.
If it can be released, I'll be more than happy to provide it to the council. I would like to sit down and talk to my command staff, the city manager, and our attorney before we put to or put it on Facebook. I think we're just gonna... One of the things that I did not write on here, and I should have, is at the conclusion of our stop on May 26, we not know the identity of that mail. We had no clue who he was. So when you hear conversation, you know, he demanded to identify ourselves, which we did. He had no constitutional, or he had no requirement to identify himself, and we didn't push him. It's an important fact.
And you mentioned that you all, you're doing a training now with all of city staff. What training expressly are you doing? What is it covering?
Primarily, when encountering First Amendment auditors who are going to be in a public place, either trying to take photos or videography or just to invoke. These are the things that we can't do. These are the things that we can do. We are going to be courteous and professional. We're going to know the difference between public and private property and what the limitations are. And we're going to do everything we can to safeguard everyone's constitutional rights. That's the genesis of the training that I provided.
But that's really no different than your usual training, right?
This is a lot more specific scenario based. We show a bunch. I showed several videos of city employees, not just law enforcement officers, but city employees being challenged by these auditors. And when some of those employees cross the line, we can't do that. So I think it's, the conversations that I've had with not just police officers, but firefighters, especially the librarians, it's challenging. it's challenging and the, and the, and the central part of it is, is everybody's got their, their zone around them. And the fact of the matter is that these people, if they're in a public place, can get really right up on the edge of your personal space with a camera. And as on public property and a public employee, there's not anything we can do about it. It upsets people.
Yeah, I think, I would too.
Chief, if it was the same auditor that paid you a visit later and sat down and talked to you, a conversation went well according to what you're saying?
I believe it did. When he, he came to the office, I got called that he was here. I wasn't going to put it on anybody else. I went to him, met outside on the front porch. Of course, he's filming it the entire time. It's live streaming. My, my employees are inside watching it. Offered him a bottle of water when he departed. Apparently he thought I poisoned it, so he poured it out. But the commentary on, on the, on the follows the, the live stream was positive for the city of Jackson.
Did he acknowledge that or did he acknowledge that? Is he still somewhat confrontation?
He's a... No, sir, he hasn't acknowledged anything. He turned his complaint forward.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate your due diligence in it, you know. Thanks for the report. You bet. Now, item number nine is our quarterly financial report presented by Finance Director Roxanne O'Malley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It's an exciting time for the finance department because it's budget time. It's ending the fiscal year, beginning the new fiscal year and then we transition right into audit. So we're very busy and I'm happy to be here to not to give our second quarterly report about the third quarter. So June 30th marks the end of the ninth period or the third quarter of the fiscal year, 23 budget year. So our budgetary comparison number is 75%. And through the end of June or the third quarter, our combined revenues are $24.6 million. And that's just a little bit over 81% of the annual budgeted amount. Highlighted in red, the categories that are lagging below the budgeted expectation. And the first one is the fees and charges for services. And this is related to water sales and sanitation fees being a little bit below where we'd like to see them right now. And I will say that billing runs about one month behind. So the other category is miscellaneous receipts. And we were expecting to refinance a note to pay off our fleet vehicles and we didn't do that. So therefore, we did not receive that revenue. That gives you the breakdown of all the revenues for all the fund category. And the next slide gives the breakdown by fund. And we're doing well as far as our funds are concerned. The grant fund is always kind of hard to budget for because you're not exactly sure when your grant projects are going to be moving. And certainly not whenever the state or federal government is going to reimburse you for those projects. So we're a little bit behind in the grant fund and that's related to us expecting a Buckner Park grant reimbursement. And that project just hasn't got completed yet, but it's, it's well on its way. And once it's finished, we will receive that money from the state. The court special revenue funds, this is a little bit weird. We financed the Tyler Technology Software and we charged the court technology fund a piece of that. And so it causes this fund at the end of the fiscal year to be negative. And then we have to transfer from the general fund to that fund to make it zero. And then we reverse that transfer at the beginning of the fiscal year. So that's why those funds show to be 0.7% at expected revenue. That's all going to normalize that lease payment. Last payment will be due next fiscal year and then that fund will build fund balance again. Then as I mentioned before, the utility fund, water sales are, are below. But like I said, we, we bill about a month behind. And the last quarter of the fiscal year typically is the stellar quarter for water sales. Do I have any questions about the revenues?
And all of these, as, are as of June 30th?
June 30th, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Correct. So it's only really billed through May for quarters.
That'll catch up real quick.
Roxanne, I do have a quick question on Melissa, Miss, Miss, yes, try to get that out, receipts. You mentioned it's because we haven't refi'd a note on one of our vehicles or some of our vehicles?
Yeah, it's about a $585,000 note that we had on vehicles. We didn't refinance that. Instead, we had the money to go ahead and pay it off.
Ah, okay.
So we were budgeting refinancing that and getting that revenue.
And getting that income.
And then we got a transfer and that'll be up here in the expenses.
So that's more of a fund balance, you're not talking about a budget?
Yes, yes.
Borrowed money or revenue to a nonprofit, so that makes no sense.
Yes, okay, I follow you now.
It's all exciting and makes sense to me.
Oh, it got well out there.
Spoken like a true account.
So we're going to move on to the expenses and remember our target here is 75%. So we're looking at expenses to be below 75%. Combined expenditures are $20.3 million through the third quarter. And it's good this amount is less than the revenue we have received. And it's also less than the budgeted amount.
Oh, I'm sorry, Roxanne.
Yes, perfect, thank you. Transfers out are ahead. They're the only categories above budgeted projections. Primarily, it's related to that transfer from the general fund to pay off those fleet vehicles. Second is a transfer from the hot fund to the new project fund to establish that fund. That fund didn't exist whenever we began the fiscal year. And then thirdly, it's that transfer that I was speaking about from the court special revenue fund to the general fund. And then all other categories are below budgeted expectations at this time. And then we'll take a look at high fund expenditures on the next slide. There are only two funds that are above the budgeted expectations. And I've already talked about that a little bit. It's the hot fund and it's that big transfer to establish the venue project fund. If you recall, we got all that bond money, we issued tax notes. So what was left of that was transferred over to establish the venue project fund. And then also the court special revenue fund and that strange transfer that in a few years won't be happening anymore. I will say that 48% of budget looks really small. And the reason for that is because we fully budgeted spending all of the bond proceeds for, for the venue project, for the water, wastewater bonds that we sold and also for the street funds and then our grant projects. And most of those projects are in the design or engineering or very early stages. So the expenses are all budgeted, but they just haven't been incurred yet. Do you guys have a question about the expenditures? All right, and then we'll just take a look at fund balance. We have three fund balance targets that we look at. You'll see target balance over there. If it doesn't have a target balance, that means the ideal balance is zero. We want to spend what we bring in and it's balanced to zero. But in the general fund, we have a much higher than our target fund balance. And that's because in the general fund, you get all of your tax money basically. It's, it's 90 something percent collective right now through the third quarter. But your expenses are spread out more than that. So that's why the, we are so much ahead of what our target balance is right now. Same as debt service fund, you get all that tax money in. I'm about to pay our principal, principal and interest payments we're due in February and August. I'm about to make the August payments and then we'll be right at our target balance, just a little bit above. The capital projects fund, including that streets bond money. The grant fund has some grant receipts that we haven't made the grant expenses yet. Anyway, all of our funds are, are showing at or above where we expect them to be at the end of the third quarter. And then lastly, I just wanted to show you our cash investments. At the end of March, we were sitting at about $27.5 million of cash investments. And again, it's higher during the beginning of the fiscal year because we received the majority of our tax monies. We received a lot of revenue, but our expenses, they just come later. And really our expenses almost lag about a month behind. Similar to our utility revenues lag behind, our expenses also lag behind about a month. But we didn't go down much from $27.5 million at the end of the second quarter to $26.7 million at the end of this quarter. And it's, that looks like a big number, but it's because we've got that, that bond money and that some of the grant money. Do I have any questions about our finances?
Looks healthy. Thank you. Thank you, Roxanna. Number 11 is a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding an application for a special use permit to allow for a wireless cell tower located at 116 North Quavada Street. And then to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance granting that request. So, Mr. James?
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, this item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their July 18th meeting. Four of the members were present. All of them voted in support of this SUP request and one member was absent. It does require as an SUP, four fifths vote by the city council for approval this evening. The subject property lies just west of Highway 69 or North Jackson Street and just north of Quavada. If you're familiar with a small green building up in that general area of town that oftentimes has bared bread trucks out front, this will be directly to the west or behind that building. The, the subject property is owned by Mr. Gene Brumlo. I believe the applicant's here this evening. It's Zoned J Wholesale Warehouse and Manufacturing. And per the zoning ordinance, with an SUP, a cell tower or a tower for the purposes of transmission is allowed to be placed on that site. I do have a couple of slides in the deck that I think the applicant may be able to walk through to address any questions that the council may have.
Coming forward. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Mayor, Council, my name is Ben Steviger with Benson, Jordan, Associates, President of Verizon. Mr. Hubbard was talking about this earlier. We had, I talked to Mr. Brumlo this morning. He couldn't make it because he had COVID this morning. So I said, no, why don't you stay at home?
Please and thank you.
This is another Verizon site that is here to do data and coverage. I'm just going to go through this real quickly.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't use all your slides, so just consolidate or whatnot.
What it is basically, a data and gap coverage. We have one, this is a good map. We have one on a guy wire tower north of this Quavada site. We have this one downtown right out the door. That one is completely loaded with everybody on it. So in between there, what we're trying to do is offload the data volume from this downtown side, which is double in the last. Every time we send a seven picture attached, we just can see it slowing down. So this is a pretty good looking site. It's, the one we had a couple of years ago, we withdrew, was south of here. We ended up getting on that Crown Castle Tower and didn't build that one. I have a bunch of stuff here, but if you have any questions, I'll quit and see if you have any. But yeah, this is going to be, sometimes you, it will be deployed on that new tower. And the, the data volume on the existing tower downtown is completely full of antennas. So you just get to a point where the, where the Verizon folks and staff understand that it's time for a new facility in between these other ones. So as many antennas as we can put up, that's about it.
Would you speak to the size and the type of antenna that you intend to construct?
This is a monopole. It's going to be, I think, 125 feet tall. The picture on the right there would be about it. They're small antennas for Verizon. They'll, they'll do the LTE still because we're still on LTE. The, the 5G is a lot smaller, five, a Samsung 5G antenna as well. So they'll deploy probably about six in the first go around, see how that goes for a couple of years and then maybe put a few more in the next few years.
So will this tower only be Verizon or are you going to sublet?
Verizon is the only one, good question, Mayor. Verizon is the only one that's building their own tower still. But this is a tower that is open to anybody.
Oh, okay.
They, they work better together. They play well together on co-location. So if there's a vertical structure that AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or, you know, the other smaller carriers want dish, they'll look at this and say, yeah, that works for a network. So that's good.
But if, but if my carrier is Verizon and you construct it, I hopefully will see an increase in the performance of my Verizon cellphone.
Data volume increase, yeah. You know, and in that area specifically, these, we call Doppler radar maps. It's going to give you better in-building coverage. And once you, right now, every carrier in town, drive down the street and you can make a phone call. Sometimes when we get in a building like this, you look down, you've got one bar.
Right.
Trying to download and attach when somebody sends you, it's going to be rolling for a while. That's what you'll see, you'll see improvement on that.
And I believe, sir, the last time you were before the city council, you were proposing like a lattice work or a more traditional tower type?
It was a self-support, yes, and we did not know that there was another one just built there a few months before.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, no.
So this is a more modern, cleaner design, less footprint?
The monopole doesn't get as high, so it doesn't really reach out as, as far. The self-support can get up to 200 to 250. But a monopole, believe it or not, is the less visible type of facility you can build. A lot of people don't even notice them when they're driving down the road. I do because it's my job, but they're starting to put up trees, monopines in some places that look like. We've done some palm trees down in the valley that look fairly good. But this is the best one to do. But that's the least obvious that you can, you can construct.
And just out of curiosity, how long will this pole be here?
Well, they're looking at 30 years, but I, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I started this 25 years ago and I thought we were over in the first 10. Every time, you can blame Apple, I don't know, every time a new phone comes out, it's got 17 other applications that can do it, which goes back to the tower, which, well, our system, it's called RF Energy. Like trying to start 10 cars with one battery. So that means that they have to update their antennas and, you know, find the technology to, to, to deal with it. But I'm privy to know that the 5G, broadband and the millimeter band 5G that's coming out is not here yet. And I know we're looking at 5G on our phones here. So they'll, they'll be here, putting in the big cities now and stuff like that. So the millimeter band, they're going out to your cable bill. You're going to be able to set up a little piece of equipment for Verizon or AT&amp;T in your house that works off that tower. And then you will no longer have to pay whatever $200 that you're dealing for, U-verse or whatever it is. That's where they're leading to on the 5G. It's not here yet, but it'll be here. Yeah, it's 30-year term. They're thinking it's going to be around 30 years unless Elon Musk makes that phone system that goes to space, distributing the power.
How long before AT&amp;T gets on there? Let's start calling them, please.
I was just traveling the lake, viewing your lake and noticed that you have terrible coverage out there. But there are just not enough people to, to draw a $200,000 facility yet. But AT&amp;T will probably be looking at that closely now that it's, it, once we get a building permit, it'll be registered with the FCC and they'll know that there's a spot that they can go on to.
I have perfect coverage in the front of my house. I have spotty coverage in the back, so.
You know, what hurts also is the amount of trees. You got, you got piney woods up here and that's really, I mean, the coverage just can't get out and through those trees so much. You got to have tall, so.
Any other questions for him? If not, I'll open up the. If not, I'll open up the public hearing. So this is a, a time where if you want to speak in favor of or against, now's your time to cut a platform and speak your piece. All right. I see none want to talk for or against. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to Adam B., which is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance granting the requested permit.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we grant the ordinance in favor of this particular cell tower.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to make one recommendation. And that would just be that with SUP, we require the monopole as opposed to like a lattice or more traditional style pole, and then cap it at the requested 125.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion by Tim McRae. Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing motion. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action proposing a tax rate and setting December 12, 2023 at 6:00 PM. As the date and time to hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and budget. And then we have to take an individual vote, so go ahead.
Very well. Mayor, appreciate your, your time this evening. We spent some time together last Thursday, I believe, or last Friday it was, discussing kind of the budget and tax rates and different things. I think we have a very exciting proposal, or a very exciting budget to put forward for the citizens to consider this year. A lot of good things, I think a lot of service enhancements and a lot of steps toward our GMAP and implementation. So I think when the city first shared this strategy map, some of the Facebook comments were, oh, you could take that to any city, or that's boilerplate. And honestly, they're not necessarily wrong. But what makes it come to life is the decisions that you make that are oftentimes hard. City Council, you're, you're balancing and making decisions based on business interests, based on the citizens that you represent, and also based on the fact that you're an employer and you have 140 employees that work for you to carry out your will to citizens of Jacksonville. But again, I think there's some phenomenal things in this budget, but let's just jump right in. I know everybody's probably most interested in the tax rate component, and so we'll into that. And then we'll, we'll trend over to, based on the proposed tax rate, what we anticipate being able to fund for the citizens. So just very quickly, these are three things you're going to be seeing over the next couple of minutes, and that's the no new revenue tax rate, the voter approval tax rate, and the de minimis tax rate. These are three of the more common tax rates. These are defined by Texas Municipal League here, or the Texas, as seen on the slide. But succinctly as I could be, I kind of underlined the meat of each of those definitions. But revenue tax rate, that would be the same amount of taxes brought into the city if applied to the same properties in the prior tax year. So new development doesn't necessarily count against the revenue stream there. The voter approval tax rate, that's the vote. Basically, if the council were to adopt that amount or an amount below it, it would not need to go before the voters, and that would bring in an additional 3.5% of revenue. And then as a city with a population of under 30,000, we do have an additional tool in the toolbox known as the de minimis rate or the fire truck rate. That rate would bring in an amount of taxes equal or less than $500,000. So those were kind of the three rates that council considered as we discussed last week and as we talked about in this budget to carry out here will. So here we have those three tax rates and how, how they would look if applied. And so we've kind of framed there on this slide, the voter approval tax rate. That's the rate that we are recommending at a staff level that council adopt this evening. It will slightly down, I believe, based on the budget and also based on some of the properties that are currently still being contested. But it's a total tax rate of 63,799. That's down from last year, or the current year, I'm sorry, we'll take a look at that in just a moment. It would bring in an additional $366,000 to the city of Jacksonville based on property tax. So that's both existing value from the year as well as new value. So we've had some nice projects come online, Pebblebrook Apartments, Super One Grocery Store, Starbucks, and some of these projects that have helped the city bring in additional revenue. And just keep in mind, as we go throughout this presentation, that every one penny on the tax rate generates about $100,000 in revenue. Last year, it was about 88,000. I think the year prior, it was in the mid 70s. So we're seeing that trend up, which is, allows the council to take a look at relieving the tax rate itself. So here's a look at our net taxable value. We were at about 896 million for the current fiscal year. We bumped up to just over a billion dollars now. So the change that we recognized based on the current appraisals was about a 13.19% increase. So again, you see that $366,000 number there when you apply the new net taxable value with the proposed tax rate of the 63,799. You're seeing a reduction in the tax rate of just over 6 and 1/4, 6.27%. And then the revenue to the city, about 6%. Here's a, basically a 10-year snapshot or a 10-year look at your tax rate. It's based on two components, your M&amp;O, your maintenance and operation, and then your interest in sinking to service, any debt the city may have issued for different facilities or structures and infrastructure. So again, there, you see on the far right, the proposed tax rate of the 63,799. You also see there what the new, no new revenue rate would have been at just 0.1 cents, and the de minimis rate at just, just about a penny below where we currently sit at the 68,085. So this is an important slide. Last year and in the current fiscal year, the average homestead value, or family residential structure in Jacksonville is on the tax rolls for 121,756. When you apply our current tax rate to that, you get a total city tax bill of about $828. This year, as proposed, we have seen, based on the appraisals, that number from 121 go up about 11 and 1/2% to 135. But when you apply the proposed tax rate reduced by just over 6 and 1/4, you get a total tax bill of 865, or about 4 and 4 tenths percent higher than the year. If you take that and apply it, you get a, if the proposed rate were to be adopted and applied to the budget as presented, you would have about a 36, the average home would have about a $36 increase, or $3 per month. So and again, that's really the tax rate's going down, the assessed value's going up. But that's just your average. If you're times the average, multiply it by five. If it's less than the average, apply that accordingly. I'll say we have some opportunities at the city to save $3 a month on your water bill. Only about 2% of our residential utility customers take advantage of that. So basically, if you lived in the average home and you took advantage of that, you could offset that simply by getting us here at City Hall, signing up for paperless billing and ACH payment of your water bill. Those things save us staff time, and we pass along a good, healthy portion of that to the citizen. So let's talk about what we're looking at funding with these. The city operates multiple different funds, somewhere around eight, many of those being specialized. But I think here tonight, we're going to focus in on the general fund, the portion of the city's budget funded by ad valorem or property tax. But these are the different areas of service and core functions that we provide to the citizens based on ad valorem, police, fire, and EMS, code enforcement, animal control, streets, parks, development services, library, administration. Things like water and sewer infrastructure are generally funded out of the enterprise fund, which is run like a business, and we have rates and rate studies to fund those types of events in the community. So here's a look at how I believe we're going to most impactfully improve the level of service and enhance the services to the citizens of Jacksonville as part of this budget. And that would be through the addition of some, some people or some FTEs, as we call it during the budget workshops. But really what carry out the services and deliver the services that our citizens want, and, and hopefully many of the ones that they desire as well. We leverage technology to the best of our ability. I commend the council for the automated water system and things. And so we were able to relieve some positions there. But I think with this budget year, it would be in our best interest to add some additional individuals to our team to help enhance levels of service. So with that, I presented as Friday, a Parks and Rec Director. We're putting well over a million and a half dollars in our park system in this upcoming year, both at the lake, Lincoln Park, Hazel Tilton Park, Buckner Park. And it's my belief that we need to leverage this time to bring on a Parks and Rec Director. We've had one in the past, there were some consolidation efforts. And I just think that based on this new investment and what we're seeing, the interest in our parks and then the lack of recreational programming, we just don't have the bandwidth to really offer that right now. But I think if we brought in the right individual, we would certainly be able to, even in lieu of having like a rec center or anything, we could do some passive type programming within our existing facilities and pools and parks. We also have the addition, as proposed, of two patrol officers. As the chief presented to you last Friday, these officers would be positioned in kind of like a swing or power shift to help reduce our response times and increase our on-street presence. Code enforcement, that seems to always rise to the top of the list. It was the top of our list in our Strategy Map Opportunities section. This would be for the addition of one non-sworn code enforcement officer. So currently, code enforcement is under the direction of, of the Police Department, and the supervisor in charge is Sergeant Roy Smicola. And then he has one formed officer, Tony Forsen, who works with him. I think, and in working with Police Chief Williams, there's, there's some merit, or there's some, there's some thought into having a un-uniformed, if you will, or a non-sworn code enforcement officer to be out in the community, developing relationships. It also reduces the cost of that citizens by not having a police officer. And I think longer term, we'll look at putting some of those police officers currently assigned to code enforcement and transition them back into patrol. Kind of a multi-year process that we're taking a step toward with the addition of this code enforcement officer. Animal shelter, it's a 365, you know, largely 24/7 operation, taking care of those animals. And so we are recommending the addition of one additional part-time employee just to help clean kettles and care for the animals. Have the addition of an accountant-one position. And again, a lot of these positions were offset with some changes from the current year. So happy to talk about that too if we need. But our accountant-one, this person's responsible or would be responsible for some payroll as well as accounts payable, and then grant administration. We'll look at some acquisitions, some purchases on future items here this afternoon, or this evening, I guess. But that position's pivotal in helping us control costs and make sure we're following our purchasing and procurement policies. And then the addition of a couple part-time lifeguards. So we're having a difficult time getting lifeguards every year, but at the same token, we would like to add a couple and hopefully at some point be able to extend our days of operation or in our hours of operation just a little bit closer to when school starts, at least for GIESD. But that would be that addition. So just quickly, big picture in terms of all the funds for the city. As proposed, we have a revenue of about 30.1 million, and we have expenditures of about 44.4. So you would probably think, well, that's very balanced. What we've done is we've issued some debt, and we've brought in some grant money that we haven't spent yet. So in this coming year, this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year '24, we'll be expending more money than we take in in the current year, but there's some basically fund balance and money sitting there to spend. So when you see these expenditure categories, you see general projects or capital projects fund there at 7.3 million, and the revenue side only being about 1.4. That's because we have cash on hand, whether it be via grant or debt issuance, to start putting back into things like streets and water and sewer. And then on this side, you see the utility fund expenditures at about 13.9 million, and the revenue side at about 8.7, and that's really your water and sewer reinvestment into the city. So sales tax, we'll spend just a moment here, but we are projecting revenue from sales tax in the upcoming fiscal year at just over $3.5 million. That's a 4.35% increase over projected year-end, year '23 end. And I think something that I just thought was interesting anyway, I think probably from having spent some time at Jedco, is if you look at our uptick in revenue from fiscal year '19 to our upcoming fiscal year '24, we see an increase in the budgeted revenue, which we've always hit or exceeded, of about $1.2 million. And if, again, if you go back to that penny being worth $100,000, that's 12 cents on the tax rate that we're bringing in via the sales tax, just in the last five years. So those are helping us keep the tax rate on the property tax side relatively flat and obviously trending down to the tune of about 6 and 1/4%. But making sure that we continue delivering services for the citizens of Jacksonville. So having the goods and services that the citizens of Jacksonville want in their own backyard, it makes a big difference. So we'll just kind of go over a couple of different funds here very quickly. The general capital projects fund, I think I recall your attention to the right-hand bar. But these are some of the exciting projects that are funded as part of this budget, pending, you know, further hearings and City Council action. But we have street improvements coming to the tune of $5.2. We're going to put in a new roof on the former City Hall that the city vacated in about 2017. We've had lots of prospects and interests in that building. It has very unique architecture, and it still has really solid bones, but it's not, it's not holding up to the weather right now at the roof level. So we want to reinvest in that and make sure that we can get a new business in there hopefully soon. We have reinvestment in Lincoln Park, Hazel Tilton Park, remodel of Fire Station 2 to make it more functional for our firefighters, some backup generators, largely just for providing power racks and redundancy in our IT infrastructure. We have the concession park ramp, as you see it there, for, that's the lake park. Some tree removal in our cemeteries, Winter Storm Uri just decimated the trees. So right now, we're focusing on the removal. I think at a later date, we'll be focusing on some strategic replanting efforts. You see Lake Jacksonville there again, and then the library facade. The Library Association, which is independent from the city, they have offered to basically match the city if we were to put in up to $100,000 into some renovations on the exterior of the library. And so we do have that programmed in, as well as demolition. We have about $192,000 earmarked to demolition. This is really largely earmarked over and above. There's another $100,000 in the budget, 50 of that $100,000 is thanks to Jedco. That $100,000 is really dedicated to more like dilapidated, substandard, single-family, maybe duplex-style properties throughout the town. The demolition program amount there, you see at just over 190. I think we're planning on targeting larger structures that have been in town for quite some time. You know, this is, a lot of that's ARPA funding, one-time funding, and so thankfully demolishing something is, it's the definition of a one-time fund. Once it's gone, it's gone. So there are some strategic properties throughout town that I think the council will be considering at future meetings. This year's budget also comes with a staff recommendation to start a vehicle and equipment replacement fund. We feel like this will make competing for pieces of equipment more competitive. It will force us to be better at maintaining and managing our fleet. But this year, it does come with some purchases as well. We generally replace two police vehicles annually. This year, you see three, that has to do with the addition of the two patrol officers, the addition of a new ambulance, two side-by-sides, which are relatively small. Those are, those things are really force multipliers though, as you're patrolling parks and cleaning up litter and setting up trash cans, a dump truck, and then an additional mower as well. And then lastly, special revenue funds. There's multiple different funds here when we talk about this, but primarily the large or the big-ticket ones are your hotel occupancy and your venue project funds. Those are the ones that, again, are funded by folks staying in our hotels. And you see the addition of a couple positions there to help staff the civic center. So you see another part-time, I'm sorry, another part-timer and another full-timer in addition to the civic center manager. And then moving forward from here, of course, we'll answer any questions at the council meeting. We still are able to kind of move a few things around, but largely the council tonight, you would make a vote on the tax rate ceiling, which again, staff's recommending be the voter approval rate. It will tick down a little bit as we get a little bit closer to adoption, which is set for September 26th. We will have the public hearing on both the budget and the tax rate at the September 12th meeting.
Okay. So we've all heard that. I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll, got any questions, we can get those after that.
Mayor, I make a motion, we propose a tax rate of 0.63799 and set a date of September 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM to hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and budget.
Okay, so you've heard the motion by Councilman Wendy Gallin. Second by Mayor Pro Tim, Tim McRae. Any questions? If you go, so if you go back, it's about the first, maybe the, keep going, maybe the third slide. The history of, that's right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So our proposed tax rate is .63799. What stands out on that slide to me is, look back to what our tax rate was in 2013, which is 11 years ago, and we're basically at the same, we're backing down our tax rate 13 years previous in generating the income that we're getting now, and offering a whole lot more goods and services for our citizens, so.
And one thing I failed to mention, I want to be completely transparent about it. The budget does include a 3% pay raise, if you will. The budget does include a 3% pay raise, if you will, for all employees, police, fire, administration, public work. So last year, the council took a great step in implementing a compensation and classification study. We got about 93% implemented, if you will, for most of our existing employees. And so this additional 3% gets us kind of close to midpoint of the market that was determined by the council and the consultant.
Sure. So that's my comment. Any other discussion, Adams?
We can either stand up and do some jumping jacks after that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll let you lead. So any other discussion? So I think we need an individual vote by council members, so we'll start with Rob Goen. How do you vote?
Yay.
Yay. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yay.
Mayor Randy Gorm, yes. Ms. Latidia Horace?
Yes.
And Mindy Galluck?
Yes.
Perfect. So we have a 5-0 approval of our tax rate as presented, so. And like James said, that's the moment it may tick down a little as we get the final numbers from C.A.D., so, C.C.A.D. Very good. Item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving the 2324 Jedco budget. Mr. Jane, Shane Pace is going to present that, so.
I have to call James Pace before.
James Pace.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers.
You bet.
Appreciate the city managers' overview of our budget. At this time, I present to you the Jedco FY 2024 budget. As James mentioned a few months ago, I presented this to you in great detail last Friday. I'll go through it as quickly as I can, we're expecting some time, so we won't give you too much of a time. So just to kind of take you through where we are, June 15th, I did present a draft version of this to the Jedco Board of Directors. They provided some comments and feedback, went back and made some changes to the budget, took it back to them on July 20th. At that meeting, they did unanimously approve the budget. So then I brought that forth to you on August 4th for your initial review. Had some good questions and comments on that. And so the budget that you're seeing this evening, we are seeking approval of the budget this evening, but it does include everything that we discussed at the last meeting. So with that, on the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see a summary or snapshot of our budget. That's a comparison of FY 2324 to FY 2223. What you'll notice, really for me, is at the bottom of the slide, that bottom number is $4.1 million. That's about a 25% increase year-over-year. That is primarily attributed to about $1 million, what we're trying to put into play that we had in fund balance, that we want to initiate some different programs and projects, try to continue the minimums seen in Jacksonville so far. So with that, I'll move on to the next slide. Feel free to stop me at any time. So here, we're looking at our assets, our cash position. We anticipate or project that our cash balance starting that fiscal year will be right at $5.5 million. Councilwoman Horace, we have about $5.1 million in the bank right now, and that was your question, and I apologize that I couldn't answer that at the last meeting.
That's all right, thank you.
Looking at our revenue streams, we anticipate that our sales tax will increase by about $100,000. Interest income is up significantly because we've had a couple of additional properties come online. And then our lease, our interest income is up significantly due to interest rates, and our lease income is up due to some properties coming online. So we're seeing about a $265,000 increase in our revenue this fiscal year. That's about a 13% increase, so we're glad to see that the revenue keeps coming in. And I always like to say, it's my job to put that money back into the community to make it a better place to look for. Next, moving on to our administrative and operating expenses. They'll stay relatively flat. We increased it, some in our salaries of administrative to accomplish any sort of salary increases that we may need or any sort of benefit increases that we may incur. And then we had some things like our website and software. There's a need for about a $9,000 upgrade to our website, as well as some software for our training room to provide access to online and interactive Zoom meetings. Next, looking at our legal and professional services. This stayed relatively flat as well. We have a slight increase to our legal expenses to make sure that we capture any costs that we may incur there. Everything else remained flat from the prior year. We do include something there for consulting. We are going to be looking at doing a retail market analysis. As City Manager mentioned a few minutes ago, when you look at that sales tax that's coming in and how they're offsetting the tax rate, we believe that retail is something that, you know, folks here in Jacksonville want and need, and we're going to continue to try to attract that. And, you know, the more information we add to arm ourselves as we go out and seek that will help us do a better job with that. So we will be pursuing that the next fiscal year. Next slide, looking at the Jedco owned property expenses. This remained relatively flat. The one thing that we did include was the maintenance of the driveway at the concourse, and that increased that number just a little bit. We have an agreement, and when we purchased that, in partnership with the city, where we, we take care of half of that, so it's a 50-50 deal there to do any maintenance or repair to the driveway. We know that there's a significant investment in Civic Center right now, and it would make sense to have flat holes and, you know, not enough, adequate driving surface there when we get that facility finished. All right. And then moving on to advertising, travel, training, and promotions. This was only about a 4% increase. The only thing really of note here is we added just a slight amount of money into our business development. One of the things that we've been doing over the last year is Jedco's been participating in a regional group and doing business improvement. So we've traveled to a couple of different places in the last year. Should be going to Detroit, Pittsburgh area in the next month or so, trying to bring back new businesses here. So we're targeting those areas where we know people are leaving. It's not a desirable business climate, political climate, and so we're trying to let them know all the great things here in Jacksonville, Texas, and why they don't want to do business. All right. Economic development projects. Looking at our committed projects, the two projects that we have remaining or carrying over are the Louvée or the Zyklus Heat Transfer Project, about $125,000, and then Bodark, which was formerly Custom Coils. We budgeted about $75,000 of committed funds there moving forward. Matching grants, we are going to continue that program at $400,000 at your next meeting in September. We'll have one of the public hearing at Jedco, and then we'll bring a resolution forward for consideration at that meeting. I think we can all see the benefit of that program. It's done a ton for downtown, so that will include our downtown redevelopment grants, our facade grants, and our demolition grants. And so we want to continue that because we've seen a lot of success with that program. And then finally, you'll notice the community development and the empty structure. That's that additional $1 million that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. So it's about a 26% increase to this entire section here. However, this is, as I said earlier, putting about $1 million into play. We want to make sure that we can commit some funds to our parks and rec, neighborhood improvement, as well as infrastructure to some of the property that Jedco owns right now. So the property we have at the Loop and 69, our industrial park, and then any sort of infrastructure improvements we may need in association with the development project. So we're excited about that, and hopefully, the council's excited about that as well. So in summary, here's a snapshot of the budget one more time. I think our Board of Directors has had a great vision moving forward and putting some additional funds in play. You can see the success that we've had over the last few years with the way that we've kind of structured some of these programs and projects, and hope that we can continue that moving forward. So with that, I would request, or I would hope that the budget would be approved, and I can answer your questions.
Any questions for Shane? Shane, not James, Shane. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. So you've heard Mr. Shane's explanation of their budget. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2324 Jedco budget.
Have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Galluck. Any discussion we may need?
No, I just, kudos on everything that we've accomplished the past three or four years.
Absolutely.
A complete change of direction from anything I ever thought I'd see. That's what we're going on in the street.
I agree.
So thanks for y'all's leadership.
There was a consultant that came by the hall last week. Jedco had engaged three years ago, and she had not been back to our town for three years, and she was just absolving away at the change. So that's a kudos to everybody involved to do that, so. If not, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Shane. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving a contract for the remodel of the Civic Center.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we are still waiting on some finalization of some contract documents. We may have to hold a special to help keep that project online, but I wouldn't know what date that is yet. So if we could just postpone it to a future meeting, it may be September meeting, but hopefully, a little bit sooner to get some more hammers swinging out there.
Best practice would be have a motion to postpone.
Okay. So I will entertain a.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Okay. We have a motion to postpone. Item number 14.
Second.
Second by Council Lady Latidia Horace. Any questions about postponing? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries to postpone. Item number 15 is to discuss and consider with possible action authorizing the purchase of fire hydrants and all accessories for some existing fire hydrants within the city of Jacksonville. Mr. James?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this item is before you this evening because it exceeds $50,000. I want to commend our staff for using Compare Co-ops to secure pricing. You see quite a big variance in the pricing that we received there, from $180 all the way up to $343 for these 50 Mueller fire hydrants and the ancillary installation valves and elbows and things necessary. I will make a point that this includes isolation valves. Many of the hydrants in our network of about 505 hydrants do not have isolation valves. So when it's hit by a car or when it's time to go replace it or perform some type of maintenance on it, we generally have to either reduce the pressure signal on that main line, which impacts our customers and our citizens, or we have to completely shut off a section of town to service it. So as we go forward with replacements and swaps, we'll be putting in isolation valves. In the future, it's going to make it much easier to maintain the network. We have, you know, probably approximately 40 to 45 that are just out of service, or not out of, sorry, but just, they're not serviceable. So they're beyond the point of reinvestment or just swapping apart, and they need reinvestment or to be replaced. And so this purchase is funded by ARPA, and installation is to come, but that'll be a combination of both city crews and likely some contractors to get them installed.
Okay. You've heard that?
That's correct. 50 fire hydrants, yep. So they're about $3,600 apiece via the Ferguson Water Works proposal.
Great.
And James, how much did we set aside in ARPA funds?
$400,000 was set aside in ARPA, so, I mean, a large chunk of that will probably be used for installation. And then I know that we would like to start like a surface treatment and preventative treatment on many that are either faded paint, chipped paint, some showing rust, some showing multiple different layers of paint. I don't know that we'll get to all 576 with that process based on its cost, but we'll take a step toward it.
Yeah. Just curious, for Water Works, what, why are they so much lower?
That I couldn't tell you. What I can tell you is that Compare Co-ops is apples-to-apples. Everybody got the same basic solicitation from the city to respond to, and it's kind of like when we bid out projects, some companies are hungry, some may have extra inventory, things like that. But it's basically the top-notch fire hydrant you can buy.
It's the one you said you liked, Randall. Exactly. I'm glad they came in and cheeks it.
Exactly.
Almost feels too good to be true, but, okay.
And it's a contrast.
Yeah.
I think the pricing is generally aligned with when we buy smaller quantities, what we've paid in the past. I think these others were a little out of line.
Oh, okay. So the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So they're more market, where the other two were a bit higher.
Right.
Okay. Okay. I just genuinely.
No, no, it's interesting.
It comes in a little too, too good to be true. Okay.
Very good. So we've heard that discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of fire hydrants and accessories, 50 of them.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus.
All right.
Throughout the city.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim McGray. Any discussion we may have? Just as a point of reference, if you drive around and you see a little blue thing in the middle of the road, reflector, I didn't know what that was, and I asked James what that is. And he brought that idea from his previous city. And at night, when you're driving around like a fire truck, there's a fire, when you see that blue marker, it tells you there is a fire hydrant either on the left or the right. If there's two, there's one on each side. And I thought he was genius.
I think they had done it here some time ago.
Have they?
And they had just worn themselves out.
Okay. So anyway, that's.
Yeah.
All right. So we got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 16 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving the purchase of a new package lift station for the replacement of the current Tremont station.
It's Mayor, City Council. On the screen here, you kind of see generally what a package lift station looks like and the location there at the far south end of Tremont, far end of Park Lane. This lift station that's currently there has been in place for about 25 years, and again, it's just time to replace it. It's something that Randall had in his budget under routine maintenance. And upgrades out of the utility fund, it, too, is over 56 or over $50,000. Therefore, it's before the council for action this evening, and the proposal came from a by-board, which is, again, it's similar to Compare Co-ops in the sense that it's a purchasing agency that we're a member of, and they kind of negotiate on city's behalfs, their clients.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. And we purchase a new pack station to replace the current Tremont lift station.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim McGray. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 17 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving the engagement of eText as the internet provider for the Civic Center and Buckner Park.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as we look to stand up the Civic Center, internet's not really there, aside from maybe some satellite-based or cellphone-based providers. So it is in our best interest to get fiber run to that building and also to Buckner Park. Buckner Park's primarily for the addition of cameras. We have, you know, the pool there and some other things that it would behoove us to keep a better eye on via security cameras. We attempted to provide or to hear three different proposals for this. Frontier declined based on their lack of facilities in the area. And then we got a rather high offer from Optimum, formerly SuttonLink, and then eText, who's currently serving at least a portion of our library's needs successfully. They came in with $21,000 to the Civic Center and then $13,000 to Buckner Park. So the 50, but we'll have long-term, you know, monthly payments to these for the services they provide. So I just thought, in the effort to be fully transparent, this is something we're working toward for these facilities.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve eText for Civic Center and Buckner Park internet service.
We have a motion, Mayor Pro Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Galluck. Any discussion we may need? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 18 is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance prohibiting, blocking boat, and restricting parking near boat ramps on Lake Jacksonville.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is something that I think, actually, Mayor, you brought to my attention. You spent some time at the lake and you know a lot of the local recreators out there and fishermen. And, but also, we have certainly, this is something I've noted myself as well, just driving around, looking at things, as has our police department and our park staff. our park staff. But we do have some dedicated parking nearest to the and just adjacent to the boat launch, the existing boat launch. We'll be adding another one in the future and some more dedicated boat and trailer parking. Right now, it is for boat and trailer parking only, but there's no ordinance that's enforceable by our law enforcement. So apart from just a friendly request, and oftentimes, it's hard to track down who's parked there because they're on, or they're playing off somewhere else. But we are going to prohibit vehicles without a watercraft-based trailer attached from parking in these areas, or more formally, or blocking the boat launch. Occasionally, someone can't find parking, and they just park their car there, and then they go off somewhere else, and then nobody can use the boat launch. So again, the signs have been in place. We've just lacked the ability to truly enforce them, and this is a step in that direction, as crafted by Brett and reviewed by Chief Williams.
Perfect. All right. I'll entertain a motion, and I'll make that motion, that we approve an ordinance prohibiting boating, blocking the boat ramps and restricting parking near the boat ramps on Lake Jacksonville. A motion made by the mayor. Second by Mayor Protem Tim McRae. Any discussion that we may need? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 19 is to discuss and consider with possible action a request to replat lots four and five of Block A Southshore subdivision.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, I didn't create a slide for this one. It's something we discussed at the workshop. It's a very, very minor property boundary change that both property owners have agreed to, basically just to make the property line match an existing chain link fence on the property. So again, as I state every time we do one of these, generally, if it's four lots or less, I'm authorized per our ordinance as to assign those as an administrative plat. This doesn't create any lots. It just changes the boundary line. However, it is on a Lake City lease lot. And so that's why it comes before the city council.
Okay. All entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a request to replat lots four and five of Block A Southshore subdivision.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Latidia Horace.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Galick. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 20 is to discuss and consider with possible change to the personnel policy regarding certification pay.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, I'm going to turn that over to Vanessa Wade, our Assistant City Manager, to touch on this.
Wonderful.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sorry, the councilman had to remind me to turn my mic on. My bad. This item is before you. I wanted to point out that this item is a part of the strategy map. The strategy map says that we will maintain well-trained professionals here at the city of Jacksonville. So as a part of maintaining our way to train professionals, they have developed a certificate pay program for the city employees. There's many levels of certificate pay, but the particular one I want to talk about today is going to be related with work. In our water department and wastewater department, you have licensed technicians that are there to take care of our needs as far as potable water and making sure that we're receiving clean water. A part of that, they can become licensed with an A license, B license, or C license. Those licenses bring with them more marketability, more locations, ability for them to transfer those skills to another community. In order to incentivize them to remain in our community, we have promoted this particular certification payment. The certification pay plan has been in place for several years. The fallacy with it is that as you continue in your licensure, it disincentivizes you to continue forward. And for example, if you were to only get an A water license, then you would get an extra $100 a month. If you were only to get an A wastewater license, you would get an extra $100 a month. But however, if you go forward and you put the effort in and you get both an A water license and an A wastewater license, then the licensure reduces to $150 a month rather than the $200 a month, which really disincentivizes me from going to getting the additional A water license, which is for the enhancement of our program here at the city of Jacksonville. And so after consulting with our public works director, we are recommending to the city council that we remove those double licensure recommendations that would reduce the cost of the licensure and only leave in that if you get an A water license, you get paid for the A water and you get paid for the A wastewater, as well as any other ones, B or C. It would go down the line. And so that is the recommendation, and I'm open for any questions.
I'm glad you got that, child.
Vanessa, does the city pay for employees to go through these certification programs?
Yes, we do have several reimbursement programs for tuition if you're going to go forward and get a formal degree as an associate's or a bachelor's degree. But then we also do pay for training to go over to get the water licenses. Sometimes, the training is actually brought in to like the Tyler area, and we're able to send our people there. And there are other times where we may be able to actually get the trainers to come here to provide that particular training so that our employees can get those particular licenses. But I will say, it requires a lot of investment on behalf of those employees that are going forward to get these water licenses, and I want to commend them for those actions.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we make action to change the personnel policy regarding certification pay.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latidia Horace. Any other questions, discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right. Well, finally, the 21 open forum for mayor and council. Anybody have anything to talk about? I want to commend the city manager and all the staff and the directors. We had our budget workshop last Friday. As long as I've been doing this, I've seen up to two, two and a half days that we had to commit to going through that. Of course, it's an exciting thing for me. It's my favorite time of year. But they do such a fantastic job of condensing it. They answer any questions that we have. We trust them implicitly. And it was, we got it done in three, four hours this time. So hats off to the people that crunch the numbers. So that's all I wanted to say. Anybody else? All right. City managers report. Mr. James?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. I know it's been a long one, but we are hiring. We have positions now. And if the budget's approved as presented this evening, you saw the addition of some additional FTEs and part-time jobs, both across and throughout the city and at the Civic Center and alike. So keep an eye on our website. We love hiring local people. That helps with retention. It helps with just engaging the community and continuing to build the culture that we're attempting to, you know, expound upon. I want to commend our fire department for the recent splash day. I think they had over 200 individuals attend that at Nichols Green. They've been doing that a number of years. They supplement the splash pad with their ladder truck and spraying water. And a big thanks and shout out to Jedco and Takeria Torres. Jedco funded about 400 tacos that were given out that day. All 400 were gone. And so that's fantastic for both the business and the citizens, and probably need to use the walking trail now. But we appreciate the fact that the fire department put that on. It's those things and rescue camp that really give back to the community and give the community an opportunity to interact with us. I do want to just thank, I mean, I have this, I have the slide there. We all know we've been battling triple-degree heat for weeks now, it seems, and I don't know that there's any relief necessarily in sight. So, you know, this city operates on the backs of the men and women that are outside every day. Those of us in the buildings were just the support. You know, we may help them make decisions, but that's really all we do is carry out the will of the city council and try to answer questions for our citizens and support those out there knocking on doors, changing water lines, making traffic stops, and running the ambulances. So I just, big, big kudos to those folks that are out there doing that. It's not on the slide necessarily, but the effort by our bulky truck and our public works team to clean up after the storm about two months ago, we offered that free service for people scheduled. I didn't personally feel any complaints about that. I know we had a lot of people put a lot of stuff at the curb, but we handled it strategically, methodically, and I think very well. I put Tech Stop on there. We've seen the recent reinvestment in some of the overlays and surface treatments on 79. I also put that on there because Mayor Protem came to me, I guess last week. There was a traffic signal issue at Canada Street. It was very, very minor in nature, but it was enough to, you know, annoy motorists for sure and create some potential safety issues. Shot an email to Tech Stop, and less than 24 hours later, they had it repaired completely. And throughout the process, what was even more commendable by Paul Schneider, one of their area engineers, was the fact that the two-way communication, as the mayor Protem saw, was just almost instantaneous. Probably four or five update emails, and all of a sudden, it's fixed. So we really appreciate having the good relationship we do with Tech Stop. Lastly, I think, I think this is the last slide. School starts next Tuesday, so before our next meeting, the mayor and I, a few other staff members were in attendance at yesterday's convocation. It was definitely a very moving opportunity. So this week, I would just encourage you, as students are looking to gear up for school, and our educators and all their support staff, take extra time on your commute. Be aware of all the school zones. You know, not many of our school zones have the flashing lights. So those signs that you've been just blasting past over the summer, they matter again. Our men and women will be in blue. We'll be out there supporting J S D's campus operations. And then just thank, thank our educators, thank the custodial staff. That's something that we learned a lot about yesterday at convocation. And we just pray that J S D has a very successful and safe school year. And that is it.
Very good. Well, with that, we will stand adjourned at 7:43. Thank you for coming.